Thank you, and with that, we will resume our Ethback meeting from earlier. And staff gave a very thorough presentation. And as was described earlier, we're going to go through these one at a time in terms of taking questions, and we'll systematically go through the list. And with that, the first option pertained to pools and swimming. And on the list, I had trustee Erhart and trustee Laskin will be next. And please, for those online, let us know through the chat or and those in line. So trustee Erhart, the floor is yours. You don't need to stand.
We don't need to stand.
You don't need to stand.
Yeah, we're back in committee. I had, I might wave and go out. I had intended to move a motion, but I thought we might move it before the meeting. So if others have questions, I can wait to move the motion. But I intend to move a motion for this. So maybe I'll wait and let others ask questions.
Okay, and you can get on, in committee, you can get on the list multiple times. So that's fine.
No, I'll let others, I'll let others start. Thank you.
Right, okay. So with that, we'll go with trustee Laskin.
Thank you very much. Let's just dive right in into the deep end, right? So none of this is new for me, and none of this is new for many. That pool has consistently come up because somehow they are challenged because they're not funded, because they're not considered part of our schools. I find it very upsetting when we talk about pools as a facility from an equity perspective, when not all our schools have pools, not all our schools have seven, eight, nine, 10 acre fields, not all our schools have cafeterias, not all our schools have, and I could go on and on and on. Since amalgamation, we have not built any schools with pools, because it's no longer considered part of funding. But prior to amalgamation, some of the different boards that made up Metro Toronto worked with their city partners and through our tax base, built pools and community centers within schools, because schools were thought of as community hubs. But when the province took us over, for some reason, they determined that part of our facilities were okay to fund, other parts weren't. And those of you that might have been around in 1998 may remember in their funding model for actually inside of schools, they were not even funding hallways. They didn't even consider hallways of schools to be school space. They were basing their calculations only on classroom space. And we had to fight that as a school board in 1998. And that was really the most significant change they made in the funding model for those first decades. And here we are again, fighting for the province to take responsibility when they funded our schools, to fund all our school facility. And I stand on principle on that. And it does upset me when somehow pools become an equity issue, because not all our facilities are cookie cutter, and they all have different space. So if staff consider pools to be an equity issue, then when are we blocking off the seven and eight and 10 acre fields and only providing ones that are less than one acre? Because that's the majority of schools in my ward. Like, we have to get real here in terms of schools came in 1998 with the facilities that they came with. And I think that point has to be made. The other thing that I think upsets me to have seen the pools on this list without any prior knowledge was, I feel that staff probably signaled this in March, when they did aquatics instructors for school-based staffing as TDSB. And I don't think it's fair that it went from that to this, to putting them at risk, especially when, as we heard last night during delegations, some of our swim clubs received permit increases, thinking that, and some were substantive, thinking that those permit increases then protected them. And I really don't understand the lack of consultation and discussion to try to come up with solutions prior to kind of these statements that feel communications cut off, and this is where we're at. Whereas as a board member of TLC, I know that discussions with the city had already started on the school pool agreement. I know from being a history here, that you get community groups and school clubs and leaders, community leaders involved. There are potential discussions that can lead to possible solutions. So I am really disappointed to see pools here again. I know this isn't a decision-making meeting, Mr. Chair, but I'm simply not prepared to accept that pools are not part of a K to 12 education. And I'll stop there on my pool comments. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Laskin. Trustee Shan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm kind of still struggling with this, because, you know, if something is good, we need to expand. Taking away cannot be explained as an equity. Like, I see equity being used in both swimming pools as well as in the music program. If it's really good, if it's useful, what steps can we really take to push for it to expand? I know it's a bit of a question of funds. And I do think, and I think we've had this discussion last time as well, that we need to figure out what access means. How can we increase access? How can we increase programming? How can we increase cross-school collaborations to have increased access for certain schools? How can we collaborate with some of the, even private or city facilities that are in places where there are no pools in schools to expand the program? But I think it has to be built into our understanding of how this is critical. I know some of the inequities are pretty pronounced when it comes to music program and arts programs and swimming programs. But the way to address those inequities is to increase the programming at areas, not necessarily to deny it to everybody. And in fact, you know, if there is a way for us to build this into a structure and say, what would it take for us to have a fully equitable swimming program in the city of Toronto? Can we work with the city of Toronto? Can we work with other levels of government? Can we work with Swim Canada and figure out a way of that? And then same thing with the music program as well. I know it sounds a little utopian, but I find the argument that because not everybody is getting it, we will cut it. Can we make, what additional steps were taken to make it available to other people? I'll agree, because I know at Toronto Pan Am Center, there was a swimming competition that TDSB hosted. I happened to be in the Pan Am Community Center that day, and I looked at which schools were there. It was happening in Scarborough, but not a lot of Scarborough school. It was also not a lot of diverse. But it doesn't mean that we walk back on it. We just built and built more. But I think one of the bigger question is that we have to be united in our opposition against all different forms of cuts. Swimming pool cuts hurts communities, so does special education, so does a child and youth worker that is being taken out of one of these schools, the community safety. So I think, I think it is, it is hard, it is hard to stay out of a particular boxed conversation, but I think we've done enough of those siloed kind of approaches, and we've had enough of these cuts that are hurting us and hurting all of our students. And it's to find the common ground and say, the real issue is underfunding. The real issue is undervaluing of programs like arts and sports and swim programs, outdoor education in our public education system. If we cave into that, we as a system are communicating that we ourselves as trustees also undervalue these other things that seems to be outside the development of a child, which is not true. We all benefited from it in the previous generation, and we cannot deny that for this generation coming up. So I do think that as we move into this discussion, we understand that, you know, as a trustee who doesn't have a lot of swimming pool in my area, I am going to be supporting, I'm going to be opposing the cuts against swimming pool. But I'm also hopeful that the cuts that are happening in many of our other schools that are very relevant to, more relevant to it as well. And then maybe when we come back in September, that we move a motion to look at what swimming program equity looks like, and how come with more solutions from this app. Can we look at what musical programs and equity looks like? What is it? How much more money is necessary? And how much more do we need to ask specifically to advance that as opposed to, as opposed to making it, making something that's been built over time, that is successful, that is a great asset within our buildings? Those spaces, public spaces are hard to come by. Once they are removed and closed and cemented, you know, we are not in this real estate battles, we are not getting those things back. And we are going to be completely removing these amazing assets from our community, whether it be outdoor education or pools. So I would use the same rationale for all of these cuts and then oppose these cuts vehemently and communicate back. If the province was able to fund the statutory benefits and those gaps in salaries, that itself would be enough for us to not having to sit here and debate all of this. That's $70 million that could be funded right away. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Shan. Trustee King.
Good evening, and thank you to my colleagues for their remarks. I couldn't agree more with everything that's been said so far. I'm coming from the opposite perspective. I'm coming from having eight schools with pools in Ward Seven, Parkdale High Park, five of which are not leased by the city, and based on these options could potentially close. I've heard from a school that illustrates exactly what trustee Laskin shared. Fern Avenue is a K to eight school, 700 students, the building's over 100 years old, a small gym, limited green space. The pool really provides a much-needed alternate space for them to facilitate that programming. It's also an older building without AC, they've got a challenge of storage space, there's pest control issues, as there are through the downtown core. And I have to add that for the families at the school, to lose a pool facility, to them would really be, they regard it as a real reflection of the value of the facility, a reflection of the care of the facility, and really just a loss of faith kind of decision for them. Apart from hearing from a school in my ward, I also heard from the Lake Shore Swim Club, who contacted me and contacted my counselor. They spoke about the large body of female athletes that participate in their program. Of course, the marquee athletes, Summer Mark McIntosh, who we know came out of that program. They rely on Keel and Western Tech, which are both in my ward, to facilitate their programs as well, and those are both sites that could potentially close. So all of that to share, you know, some illustrations of, you know, what we're talking about being very real. I wanted to just piggyback a bit on what we heard from trustee Shan, and I'm wondering, I don't know where we'll be at the point of the next city school advisory committee at the city of Toronto, but I wonder if that might be a vehicle for some information sharing, some advocacy, something that could facilitate exactly the kind of collaboration that we're speaking of, knowing that the city certainly has a vested interest in this conversation as well. And then, I'm not at all in support of this, and I hope that when we get to decision-making, we'll deviate somewhere else. But I do want to go through the exercise of just asking one question of staff. Where we see a next step of renegotiating the leases with the city of Toronto, and I know that's underway, the directive, or it indicates there that that's to achieve cost recovery. And I'm just wondering, this might be a basic question, but if there's a reason, it doesn't also suggest expanding on leases, more leases to more schools?
Through the chair, we would definitely be looking at that as well. I think the more pools that we can lease on a cost recovery basis, obviously the more pools that remain open for the city of Toronto. The most important thing is that cost recovery piece. And it's, again, we, in preliminary discussions, we've also indicated that the capital costs need to be a shared cost as well. Right now, TDSB is 100% responsible for those costs. So certainly part of the discussion is, you know, we would always love to expand the use and the number of pools that are leased. And once the city determines how many they would require, then we would move on to leasing them to other third-party organizations. So the intention isn't, as you see through the steps, closing would be the last resort, but certainly we would be happy to lease more pools to the city.
Through the chair, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. And that's all for me on this item.
Thank you, trustee King. I'm going to pass the chair to trustee Hassan.
The floor is yours, trustee McCray.
Thank you. I like, trustee, I think it's, you know, I think we all, anyone who's had kids values the skill of learning how to swim and be safe near water. And most, and our family was like most, we needed them to be in the water so that they could be safe, and we were comfortable with them in that environment. I had a colleague reach out to me today and ask me if my girls ever swam in a city pool. And the answer was, my first thought was no. They, there was no pools in the schools that my daughters grew up in. But uniquely enough, at age six and seven, their introduction to competitive swimming came through a city program that's called Splash, or it was at least called Splash then. And it happened at Norseman School, which was inside, and they were proud members of the Norseman Vikings. And their enthusiasm let them dream and grow and ultimately represent our country. And Brit's got an Olympic medal that I talk about more than she does, but she'll just have to get used to it. And I think it's also worth noting that, as trustee King alluded to, that the most gifted female swimmer on the planet grew up in our district, in our communities. And the concept that we would be closing pools and, you know, you get this kind of, and it drives ambition, and it drives inspiration, and that we would have this glorious example of what was possible, that would help children dream, and then we would be closing the door to the access to these dreams, seems counterproductive to me in the very least. So this is, you know, really concerning. But I am going to play, I'm going to take a time to explore, because I'm not, I want to understand this fully. If we close pools, what do we do with the square footage of the pool? Like, what, do we pour concrete in them? Like, what happens to the physical space they occupy in our, in our buildings? Like, what does it cost us to make this space, this square footage in our buildings useful? Or is it just forever, we close the door, we don't use it, and we give up on the areas that, within the building that it covers?
Through the chair, that is something that would have to be determined. Obviously, when we close the pool, we want to be sure that we've gone through every ability to keep it open. So once it, because once it closes, it does, even if it's just draining the water, to get it up and functioning again would be challenging, right? So there certainly has to be, there are costs associated with closing it, and there are also costs associated with reopening if we were to do so. So those are the things that we have to consider. And to your first question, you listed two options. I'm not sure what, if there's another option or what the right option is.
Okay, and I'll follow up through you, Chair. I know there were other jurisdictions that had pools that operated and have chosen to move away from that. It may be worth looking out to them and finding out what exactly, from an operational point, they walked away from, but what was the capital expenditure in repurposing that, their square footage? Or is the only reasonable, you know, capital thing just to close your eyes, close the door, and pretend it doesn't exist? So I do think it would, before we go down this avenue, I think it's worth noting what it really would mean and all of the applications that it would have. And that concludes my questions. And with that, I'll take the chair back. Thank you, sir. Trustee Pay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly have a few questions to ask the staff regarding this report. Can we go to, I have a working interest regarding the IMI program.
Trustee Pay.
Yeah.
We're going to go through the, the presentation was complete, and we agreed that we were going to go through it, option by option. And then we'll turn the page, and we will ultimately get to IMIs. Do you have any questions as it pertains to?
Yes, yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a few questions regarding the pool. So I want to understand the staff proposing plans here. So as I'm looking at the report, we have 66 pools, right? So basically, 38 pools being leased to the city or leased by a private organization, right?
Through the chair, 27 to the city and two private.
Okay, 29, okay. So basically, that leaves us, 37 of the pools are only used by the schools, by ourselves, right?
Through the chair, they are permitted out after hours to other organizations that use them after hours. So if there are permits to.
So basically, so the staff are proposing to close all those 37 pools only used by us, right?
Trustee Pay, I'm going to ask you to, I've sat in that seat, and I understand that specific dilemma, which is why I request to sit over there, so that the people online can hear you, and I ask you to speak into the mic.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. So I want to ask the staff the questions. So we're proposing, so staff proposing close those 37 pools only used by TDSB schools, right? Correct?
So through the chair, we would first look to the city to renegotiate cost recovery with the city for those 27 pools. And as trustee King indicated, maybe look at expanding the number of pools that they use. Then the next step would be to go to a third party to say, or have some sort of process to identify third parties in order to be able to enter into exclusive use, lease agreements with those third parties. And so then, once that is done, the number of pools that are remaining in this recommendation would be the number of pools that would be closed. If we were to do it today, based on the pools that are open, and assuming that the leases were at cost recovery, you're correct, the number of pools would be 37.
My next question will be, how many students those swimming program really provided by TDSB? So what's the impact to the student number if we were to close all the pools, which are only using by us? What's the student impact number?
Thank you, and through the chair, we have the numbers of students that have participated in the Swim to Survive program, which was just around 5,500. We don't have the number that participate in individual swimming programs, because that's run through individual schools who may have a pool, who may also be running it as far as a physical education program, or alternatively in for a swim club. So we wouldn't have that across our system. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Solomon. So I have another question through you, Mr. Chair. I want to understand why we pay our aquatic instructor almost $10 or $7 more than the city wages? Because city pays between $17 to $23, and we pay $28 to $29, $79 per hour.
Thank you. And through the chair, part of it, what takes place is, because of the fact that our programs happen during the instructional day, all of our aquatic instructor have to be over the age of 18 years of age, whereas with the city, that necessarily, isn't necessarily the case. Thank you.
Okay. So is there any other way we can drive down the cost by lowering the wages?
Sorry, through the chair, can you repeat that question?
So through the chair, the aquatic instructors are part of QP, and so their wages are determined centrally, and therefore we cannot impact those wages.
So one thing I want to ask, when I look at, you know, this operating cost, maintenance cost, utility cost, is this a utility call only associated with the pools or associated with the super secret school that have a pool?
Thank you, through the chair. So that is a modeling of what the utility costs are for operating the pools. And that takes into account water, heat, electricity, and don't forget pools of ventilation systems, et cetera. And then, oh, I should say, that also includes the change rooms and any washrooms that are affiliated with the pools.
Okay, thank you very much. Through you, Chair, I do see that is our permit income is around $3.5 million. I want to ask the staff, in a model that on the cost recovery basis, how much more permit fee we can bring in if we increase?
Through the chair, if the trustees recall, recently, we did present a report regarding bringing our permit fees up to cost recovery. And our recommendation, which was approved by the trustees, was to do a phased implementation to get us to $160 an hour for our pools. That will be in about a year's time. And that is based on cost recovery for the, what would be translated to the rent of the facility. The other thing that we need to take into account, and that was another part of this report, is that we have to factor in the use of pools on weekends and caretaking costs to operate the building on the weekends. If you recall, we were going to come back in January with more information about that.
Thank you very much. That's what was a wonderful answer to me. So I just want to maybe just tie on my question, previous question. So in your best estimates, through your chair, if we increase the permit fee, how much more revenue we can really bring in?
Thank you, and through the chair, I think the challenge with that, trustee Pay, is what is the tolerance of some of our community groups to be able to absorb a permit fee increase? And we did hear, when we brought the permit fee report to trustees, that increasing the permit fee even more would have an impact on them. The other model that is suggested in this report, which is to see if we can find third parties interested in both investing and operating our pools after hours, that hopefully they would be able to tolerate a greater increase in what they would pay us, because they in turn are running a business to offer swimming lessons out to the public, right? So it's that balance between our community groups and private swim clubs.
That's wonderful. I really appreciate his answer. I have another question regarding the other thirty-seven schools which have pools. Why we're not leasing or to other, to other community group? Or just like the city, and I do know that city for like, for example, for the community center, they don't have a certain hours, you know, after hours or certain hours that offers to public. So is that possible, we can utilize all those swimming pools to offer certain program to the public? In the way we can recover the cost for those swimming pools which is only used by our school?
Thank you, thank you, trustee pay. And in fact, that is what this report says that we are going to look into is whether we can lease out those pools to other parties to generate revenue that, as I said, includes both operating and capital.
Yeah, I just wondering what is a way we can advertise those, you know, swimming pools in the better way that we can attract more public interest?
Thank you, trustee pay. Well, I can tell you that our pools are pretty heavily permitted after hours currently. And also before hours, we do have some swim clubs, community groups that use the pools early in the morning as well as after school. So whenever the school hours, you know, when outside of school hours, they're pretty heavily permitted now. I don't think it's a matter of needing to find new groups to permit. I think it's more a matter of, you know, what is the financial model that we would need to truly be cost recovery and/or make more money, as you say, from the pools?
Absolutely. I think the whole argument here really about the cost recovery. And if it really can recover all the cost, then we should really not to close all those swimming pools. The problem is, is can we really find a way to recover all the cost? So what's the innovative way to recover those costs? I believe that the staff, okay? And, you know, I finished my question. Really appreciate. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, trustee pay. Trustee Lee.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I really appreciate the report and the discussion. And I really like the format. So this is a really good conversation that's going on. With regarding to the pools, we talked about we need to increase the rent to the city. Do you have any high level numbers on what that difference is right now? How much, what is our deficit when we are leasing into the city on average per pool?
Sorry, through the chair, that is something that TLC is working on to determine what the appropriate cost would be. And again, we do need to factor in the capital costs as well. So right now, we know that when we compare what we have in revenue to what we are paying in cost, that the two don't match. And so that's where we have to determine where it is that we need to make the adjustments.
But just from a maintenance perspective, without capital cost, because I know that might take more to calculate, just from a daily operations maintenance and utilities perspective, are we operating in a deficit? Or are we operating in a surplus?
Through the chair, well, we, from a maintenance and operating cost perspective, we've estimated those costs at seventeen point two million and we're bringing in nine point one million in revenue. So that difference to me is showing that we are not operating on a cost recovery basis. And that, and there was good work done by, through the permit fee increases, which would help to close that gap. But we also have to do the work with the city and with our private lessies as well because there's a gap to be closed there. I don't have the exact number right now, which, what is assigned to the people who are leasing and the city who's leasing versus what is a permit reduction? And I'm not sure if Executive Officer Pachetti has that information either.
Through the chair, no, I'm afraid I don't. I have made note of it and we'll look into this further.
Did you say that the, through you, Mr. Chair, that the revenue that we gain is nine point one million?
Through the chair, yes, nine point one million is the lease revenue and the permit revenue added together. And the costs associated with those pools is seventeen point two million.
Okay, so in appendix E, we have a line that says lost revenue for closed pool permits, three point five. Can I make the assumption therefore then the lease revenue is five point five or five point six?
Through the chair, it is, I think, indicated in the report, so I'm just going to pull it up. But that's a good assumption until I find the number.
So if I were to say, so we have around half the pools that are leased to the city. So and it costs a seventeen point two, divide that by two, you're looking at eight, eight and a half ish. So we're, 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 we're spending on average eight and a half for the pools leased to the city, but we're bringing in five and a half. So we need to increase the city's lease from us by over fifty percent to be cost recovery. Is that the right expectation to set for the board here?
Through the chair, yes, that is reasonable. And the only thing that I want to add in, just to make sure that we're all looking, we're talking about the cost to maintain the pool and what would happen if the pool were to remain open and the funding that we would need to receive.
Right.
We're not talking about the aquatic instructors because that's a separate cost associated with running the programming. So we tried to separate the building and operating the pool from the cost of programming.
I understand. I assume, I assume what the problem says that we need to make sure our pools are cost recovery. They mean the building as opposed to the programming, right? Because I think we have the ability to determine what program, what programming the school board pays for. So have we ever chatted with the city or even had a quick text message with them to say, are you, are they able to absorb a fifty percent increase on the pool costs?
So through the chair, the meetings have started. I've attended one meeting with the city, with TLC, and the TLC continues to have conversations with the city to determine what they are able to absorb.
Okay. And when we're saying, when we're talking about, we're going to, and to be frank, the total cost is a hundred fifty-four thousand dollars a year per pool. Napkin math, right? And I know, I know some of my trustee colleagues told me that they hate my napkin math, but you know, we're doing it today. So, so that's not, that's not a bad expense. Like it'll cost them a hundred times that to build a new pool and then they'll still have to operate it. So I'm comfortable with us doing that. When we're talking about looking for new tenants, associate director, you mentioned that we have no shortage of tenants. We just have a shortage of what they're willing to pay us. Now, when we're talking about this, would additional tenants occupying more time slots fix the issue? Or are the current tenants already occupying all the time slots and they're just not paying enough?
So through the chair, I will go to Executive Officer Pachetti for that. She has more information about the usage of the pools after hours.
Thank you. And to trustee Lee, I would say that the majority of our pool permit hours are in fact permitted out within the structure that we have for our existing permit hour structures. Our pools are very popular. There is rarely an issue with finding someone to use the pools. But I also do want to point out that, you know, we haven't been making our pools available during the school day because first of all, we have students in the buildings. And second of all, a lot of the kids who might sign up for swim lessons with these private swim clubs are in school during the day. So the majority of the use does fall into permit hour after school and weekends.
Yeah, I think there is a conversation that can be had with our governments on elderly or adult swimming programs or even, you know, newborn swimming programs. But I'm sure staff, you're good at doing that. The reason why I asked this question is because based on the math that we just did, we need to triple our permit fee rates to make it break even, right? So the question right now for us isn't whether or not we have enough tenants to occupy the time slots, is whether or not we have enough tenants to occupy the time slots at triple the current cost. From that, I think the question asked by trustee pay is very relevant. And it is, what are we doing to actually market our pools? If we do a great marketing job, we might get more rate, we might get more higher paying tenants. If we don't do a great marketing job and we, based on the current, we base our operations on who we currently have, then what we get is what we have. And that is one-third the amount of rent that we need to collect. So my question to staff is, what can we consider to market our pools properly via the real estate industry or another industry that you think is appropriate to see if we can get higher paying tenants?
Through the chair, it's a good question and I think we'd have to take that away and do a little bit of brainstorming. Obviously, with, if we are increasing marketing, then there's a cost associated with that as well. So I think we'd have to take all of that into account. And if that's somewhere that trustees were asking us to look, that's something that we could do.
Thank you. Through me, the chair, my clock never stopped, by the way. I'm almost done questions, though. The, I would just say that I encourage staff to do so because I think for this board to make a decision, we need to, for the sake of convincing ourselves and also demonstrating to the community that we have looked after, looked there at every rock. We need to do the due diligence and consider every option and consider every business case. So I would recommend haste in getting this back to us. And my last question is, do you need a motion to do this or can staff just take it away?
Through the chair, we can take that away.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Lee. Did you want back on the list or?
Just for the pools, I'm good.
Okay, thank you, sir. Trustee Hassan.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, Chair, just a quick question, a clarification for staff. I just want to make sure here that I'm understanding this right. And for all those who are listening, all pools that are being leased by the city, you're also proposing to be closed as well too. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that is not correct. We are saying that we need to renegotiate the lease with the pools with the city. And it needs to be on a cost recovery basis. So our understanding is that, our assumption is that the city would be willing. I think there's a need there to be, to move to cost recovery and then those pools would remain open. Again, it would be, remain open for city usage. And I just want to be really clear because I don't want us to think that if we, if we're keeping a pool open for the city, that we would still have the staff to be able to provide the programming. Because again, they're two different things, right? So even if it's a pool that the city is responsible for and they do come to the table and say, yes, we're going to pay cost recovery. And so we continue to keep that pool open. There would be nobody to offer programming during the day. So it would still be expected that the Swim to Survive program is the programming regardless of whether there's a pool in the school or not.
Okay, so if those negotiations do work out in our favor and they're able to confirm that they can negotiate for cost recovery, let's use Western Collegiate as an example, which is currently leased by the city. If they're able to support with TDSP staff or programming, how would that oppose to another school? Let's say Western Tech or York Memorial, which is, which has no lease by the city or any, or any private company for that matter? Thank you.
So, thank you. And again, it's a good question and it's difficult to determine. Our assumption is that the people who are leasing the pools right now, so the twenty-seven at the city and the two private, our assumption is that they would move to cost recovery. And so by that, that means that we keep those pools open. At the same time, the city may want to have more pools and so that could take, keep additional pools open. And we want to provide an opportunity, a period of time working with TLC to provide an opportunity for other organizations to come forward to lease the pools for exclusive use on a cost recovery basis. So that would keep more pools open. So it really is up to the city and then up to us to find the partners that would want to lease for exclusive use to keep as many pools open as possible.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is, what does the timeline look like in finding a resolution with the city on a final agreement here?
Through the chair, the lease ends at the end of this, I believe it's August thirty-first. That being said, that we can be in holdover. So we do and have been having the conversations with them. It certainly wouldn't be the intention that by a date, if we don't have something in place that we'd say, okay, fine, we're closing the pools. Like, but we would be negotiating with them and we would determine how we were going to be able to get to a cost recovery place. Because again, we recognize how important, especially the pools that are leased, not just those pools, but the pools are to the community program that happens. And so we want to be able to do what we can to maintain it while still being on a cost recovery basis for the school board. Because when we look at the direction that we've been provided both by the ministry and by the auditor general, is to look at things that are not cost recovery, that are outside of our core mandate. And they wouldn't consider pools, like offering pools to, for swimming lessons outside of the school day. Certainly, they wouldn't consider that part of our core mandate. So the expectation is break even. And the other part of that is if we did the jurisdictional scan, any other pool, schools that have pools, and there's not that many, but even if they have one or two, the city is either taking full responsibility for them. And there was a reciprocal agreement where the school can use it. But it's up to the city, right? The city is maintaining, the city is scheduling, the city is covering the costs of, of operating the pools. And so that's, that's what we're comparing it to. That's what we're trying to work with the city to determine what the right balance is for us to be able to, again, be cost recovery for the operation of pools, but still maintain them for the use across the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hassan. Trustee Edidio Vitas.
Thank you. Through the chair, a quick question. Because I heard the, one of the other trustees mentioned that maybe for the, for the pools, what we could do is we can try and lower the salaries for staff. And I do remember city staff have to raise salaries for lifeguards a couple of summers ago because they couldn't hire people because of the salaries. Are staff able to comment on that?
Through the chair, we certainly, over the last three years, have had some challenges with respect to hiring aquatics instructors. This year, based on the outreach that People and Culture has been doing and also when we moved towards a different type of system as far as the usage of aquatics instructors, we've been able to achieve a level where we have not had as many concerns around lifeguards and aquatics instructors as far as employment goes. But it is an ongoing challenge that we do face. And so we always are trying to continue to hire where possible. Thank you.
Thank you for the answer. Through the chair, I, my comment on this is like, I mean, it sounds amazing when you say something like, you know, we're going to find efficiencies and we're going to be able to reduce costs and things like that. The difficulty with that is that, you know, in reality, people are not going to be working for lower wages. And, you know, if we reduce the wages of existing staff, we would lose the whole host of them because they go somewhere else. And so to be honest, I find that simple minded, that we can go out and, and sort of run back a napkin math on some of these very complicated issues and, and find the savings just because the Ministry of Education said we need to. When some of these things are disconnected from realities, the realities that our parents and the students want and the realities that our communities expect of a board of education in terms of the services that we provide. And, you know, there are services that are luxuries and there are services that are life-saving. I had one of my students passed away on a tragic accident because they didn't know how to swim, not that long ago. I think it's important for us to remember that the things that we're talking about here have consequences. And just simply to try and balance, for the sake of trying to balance, without taking into consideration that we have other try and balance for the sake of trying to balance without taking into consideration that we have other elements um that are mandated uh that we saw um uh a north to uh that are not simply just balancing a budget. Um we have uh under Education Act obligations to uh provide meaningful, fulsome educational experiences for students as well. Alright, so leave it at that and I just wanted to comment on that because hard to get get my head around uh some of the comments uh on that. Thank you.
Uh thank you, Trustee Didi Vitas. Uh Trustee Patel.
Thank you. And to you, Mr. Chair, uh most of the questions are asked, but this is just for clarification. So thirty seven permit revenue is three point five million, am I correct?
I think that is correct. Through the chair.
I'm not sure if you hear the response.
I don't know who's going to answer this question. So out of sixty six, we have thirty seven permit holders and then uh their revenue is thirty point five million dollars. Am I correct?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Thank you. And uh to you, Mr. Chair, these thirty seven permit holders, who are they? Are they?
Sorry, clarification through the chair. Trustee Patel, it's thirty seven pools that are available for permits. So there may be multiple permit holders in those pools. Like more than one.
It it's occupied through you, Mr. Chair, am I correct?
They they are occupied after hours during permit hours. They are permitted out.
And and the revenue we generate from that thirty seven per pools by multiple permits.
Yep.
Are three point five million, am I correct?
Correct.
Twenty seven pools are operated by City of Toronto. Correct?
Through the chair, that is correct.
And and we generate six point one million dollars from city? Is that correct or am I reading something wrong?
Uh through the chair from the city and the two lessees, yeah, the two private companies, but yes.
So the two private companies, if we deduct them from the City of Toronto, what is our revenue?
Sorry, through the chair, I don't have the breakdown in front of me, but between the twenty nine pools, the the revenue is six point one million.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, is there some reason why those two permit holders' revenue is not here or staff needs time for that?
Sorry, through, it's included in the six point one million.
So it's through City of Toronto or it's a separate permit holders?
The six point one million is the money that we get from leasing the pools. The leasing is twenty seven pools for the City of Toronto and two privately leased. So in total, the lease revenue is six point one. Uh I would have to find out what the breakdown of is exactly uh for those two specific pools.
Uh through you, Mr. Chair, what I'm trying to get through these questions are if we permit to City of Toronto, are we at cost recovery? That's number one. If we are permitting to outsiders like, you know, a third party stakeholders, whoever it is, are we there as at a cost recovery or we losing money there?
So through the chair, um I think Trustee Lee was was getting at this. So we get six point one million dollars in revenue from the city for twenty seven pool or from leasing for twenty nine pools. Twenty nine is approximately half. It's a little less than half. Our costs are seventeen point two million dollars, so half of that is what nine, close to nine million? So we're about two million short, I think is was the back of the napkin math. But we certainly can look at at the math to to um provide more uh detailed information if required.
Alright, so I'll change some tune. Uh through you, Mr. Chair. Pools after hours, what are the timings?
Thank you. And through the chair, well, our permit hours for pools begins at six P M and can go to ten P M during the weekday and then on the weekends, I'm believe it's nine P M to uh six P M on Saturdays and nine P M to three P M on Sundays. I I believe I have to double check that, but yeah.
Thank you. And and to you, Mr. Chair. Are all these hours fully booked or it's only Tuesdays, Wednesdays, or Mondays, Wednesdays, or Mondays, Fridays, or Saturday not available? Sundays are not available, something like that or it's? How many hours are we looking in here?
We, similar to how we permit at our gymnasiums, it's effectively the same amount of hours. And uh also I should mention that some of our pools are also permitted early in the morning before school starts.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, are there any contractual obligations with our union partners where we cannot operate uh outside the hours? Sometimes, you know, uh community partners wants afternoons and we do not have caretakers and the permits are denied. So same thing like pool, if somebody wants to do in their hours, uh you know, sometimes because of caretakers, uh permits are denied on weekends. And most of the community partners, you know, for sure, I mean, the eastern part of the city I know, uh they want those type of pools on weekends and they are not available because of caretakers or contractual obligations with our union partners. So access is not there. So is there any contractual obligations or is there any hurdles? Because any in real estate, any empty space is a loss. Right? So I mean, the pools are there. I I also see a suggestion of uh talking to a third party. I do not understand how we're going to talk to a third party where all of our sixty six pools are pretty much occupied. If this was on the table, pool conversation is happening for last how many years? I mean, why why did we not explore all all those options? So is there any room for even negotiating with a third party who wants to, you know, operate pools?
Um thank you through the chair. So, Trustee Patel, if I can just re- uh respond to your first question about, you know, uh there being pools that are not made available um because of our obligations with caretaking. Um we already are in a situation on weekends where we pay overtime to our caretaking staff to operate the pool. So it's really just a matter of paying more overtime, be it longer hours on a Saturday or longer hours on a Sunday. But if you recall, when we presented that permit report, the challenge we have is that the board has been paying for caretaker overtime for at least fourteen years. And um while there were some grants available early on that offset that cost, that cost is now fully borne by the board. And while we did increase permit fees for pools, we're we only increased it to uh the rental cost recovery. We didn't increase it to include per uh caretaking overtime on Saturday or Sunday. And we wanted to take a year to understand what the financial uh changes would would make with the permit fee increase before we came back to board with another report about permit fees, caretaking overtime. So in answer to your question, certainly, we could open the pools for longer hours. But if we don't recoup the caretaking overtime to run those pools, and don't forget caretakers have to do everything else to get the schools ready for Monday morning when the students come. If we don't recoup those hours, it's actually just going to be more cost to the board.
Uh thank you. And uh through you, Mr. Chair, I do understand that, but when we talking about a business model, right? Uh all the cost associated with the operating a business should be covered. And and that's what staff is trying to explore with the third party. I don't think so that we are trying to explore something which will be paid from our pockets. And and when we permit on the weekends, I'm pretty sure, I mean, we are not paying any caretaking extra cost or any overtime from our pockets. It's paid by the permit holder. So I mean, I I'm it's it's very I mean, from business perspective, it's very tough for me to understand this, that it's been paid by us because we're talking about cost recovery. And and if you go to a business model, in business, there is always that to make money. We are not there for a cost recovery or doing a services. So I mean, but make me understand that how are we paying for an overtime for a pay as you go? Let's put it that way. Any permit on weekends are pay as you go. Weekend caretakers are not there uh on on a regular basis. It's they are always called when something is needed. So I mean, on weekends, if you allow a permit, I mean, please make me understand where is that cost coming from?
So through the chair, I can start. So we did bring a report to trustees. I believe and I'm just trying to to make sure, but I believe it was February uh PPC um where we did talk about the challenges that we have with permit fees and and how our permit fees weren't covering costs. Trustees did approve uh some of the recommendations and then there were there was a commitment to come back. So in a commitment to phase it in, and there was a lot of concern about the increase in the the rental rates and how it was going to impact community groups. So we have had that discussion. Um we we have our our policy says that it should be cost recovery, so we identified that we weren't um following the policy and and we're making recommendations. Worked very hard with the community use of schools, a community advisory committee in order to increase. So we have had that conversation. We do know that we need to increase permits to cover the the caretaking costs, but there already is a fairly substantial increase that is taking place. I believe it starts in September. And so um the the challenge is is that the permit costs increased for September are not going to cover the cost because, as you said, we're not taking into account um caretaking fees. In addition, uh uh the the capital costs associated with them have not been factored into the extent that we have with regards to the uh third-party uh audits that have taken place. So now that we've had third-party audits, we know what the capital costs are. And so we also need to find a way to be able to continue to pay for those. And it's not just, it's a hundred and twenty six million dollars over the next ten years and then it's done. It's a hundred and twenty six million dollars and then we have to continue to maintain them. And um I guess part of that challenge is, and rightly or wrongly, and I'm not this isn't Stacy's opinion, this is me telling you what what the challenges are with getting buy-in to spending our money on pools to maintain them as opposed to classrooms, washrooms, hallways. Um it it's a it's a hard argument to have uh with um in particular, the ministry. And I'll just say that, right? The if if we didn't have a four billion dollar uh deferred maintenance backlog, then we might be having a different conversation about spending a hundred and twenty six million dollars on pool renewal. But because we do have a four billion dollar backlog, it's really hard to go with our handout to the ministry when they don't believe that we should be spending that money. So again, not Stacy's opinion, I'm just telling you the challenges that we have. When we talk about we need money to to do pool renewal, um it's it's not um seen with the same priority that we see it as. And and I'm not making a judgment on that. I'm just letting you know that that's where it is. So we don't, our our costs are not covered right now. Um we have no recouping of costs related to capital. And it's, I don't believe that the permit holders would um would bear on their backs. That doesn't mean to say that we're not looking at other things. In fact, we just looked at how many pools do we have that have separate entrances? Because then can we maintain those pools and offer like them for use during the day so that they're not impacting the school? So there's lots of things that are going on in order for staff to try to um keep as many pools open as possible. But uh it's I don't think permit fees are going to be the solution because the permit fees will be exorbitant um for uh some of our community groups. And we heard that even with the increases that we've already proposed.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, I've got twenty eight seconds. I'll make a small comment and I'll let staff to respond to this. I'm hearing three statements. Uh and I'm not sure where where am I lending on these three statements. One is to explore the options to look into third-party. On other hand, we are recommending to close the pools without even exploring the first option. And the third one, what I'm hearing is the policy of a cost recovery. If a policy is about cost recovery, where where does the first bottle of business comes in? So I I'm it's it's very tough for me to understand.
So so through the chair, I just wanted to say, the way that you're the reading, it's a step process. So first, we would negotiate with the City of Toronto. The next step is to negotiate with third-party providers. And then the next step would be to close pools. So it's not one or the other or the other. It's a process to get to to close as few pools as possible. And then again, I think it's really important that we talk about um the programming aspect because I just want to make sure that we're aware of what this proposal means. It means that even if the pool stays open, that there would be no aquatic instructor there during the day. So programming would not happen in the same way that is currently happening.
Uh thank you, Associate Director uh Zooker and Trustee Patel. Trustee Alaskin.
So so, Mr. Chair, thank you uh for you to um Associate Director Zooker for making that point clear. I can't stand the fact we're talking about money from permits, money from leases, money from the city. All of that predicated on the pools being closed for our school kids. Like like, that's the conversation we need to be having. We're not in, we we really aren't in the business of permitting pools for outside groups. We're in the business of providing school programs as part of physical education for our kids because those pools are in schools. So so I think we're really sidetracked here in terms of the the main point is no matter what we're talking about, the options proposed by staff are closing programs for kids in schools and getting rid of almost six billion dollars in aquatic infrastructure costs. So so I think we we really need to focus on the fact that it's six million dollars or a little bit less to run the aquatics programs in the school in pools in schools regardless of what the costs come in for permits. And we don't even know, and I've asked staff this, we don't have an operating cost for each individual pool? If we don't have an operating cost for each individual pool, how do we even begin conversations about third-party leasing? So we actually need each pool, who's permitting them, what money those permits come in to bring in, and what are the operating costs for each of those pools? And I would like it defined by real operating costs, not the cost of of water and heat for change rooms or washrooms associated with the pool. I think I think that needs to be separated out. So so we need a lot more information before we need, you know, this decision and 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 frankly, if we're closing those pools for kids in schools to use and school programs, why should we be permitting them for outside groups when our own kids can't use them? Let somebody else permit them. Give the whole things away. I I mean, I don't believe that for a second because I believe these are vital parts of infrastructure in Toronto schools and I actually don't care what the other GTA boards are doing because they didn't build the pools prior to nineteen ninety-eight in their schools like the City of Toronto did. All that's moot. It it's diversionary. It's to try to make us feel like somehow we've done something wrong. We haven't done anything wrong. We built our schools as community hubs with our tax base for programs for our kids. And somebody mentioned about more schools using those pools. I remember that conversation a year ago or two years ago. Wh- where where'd that go? Was it up to trustees to call principals, to call principals about what schools to use? I mean, I don't think there's been much effort put in except from a money perspective, which I get because it's except from a money perspective, which I get because it's budget. But we have had these conversations in the past. I guess the expectation was, and many, many of of at least parents and community members from pools in my ward came in and said they would love to be sharing those hours with other schools. Whose responsibility was that to make happen? Because obviously, it hasn't happened. Or at least it hasn't happened in any sort of coordinated way. So I I I just felt like I had to like, let's bring the conversation back to the fact that what's being recommended is closing pools and not operating swim programs for kids in schools. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Laskin. I'm going to pass the chair to Trustee Hassan.
Floris, your trustee McLean.
Uh, thank you. There was a something mentioned earlier through the chair. Um, around York Memorial, does the old York Memorial have a pool? Or does the current George Harvey location have a pool? Like, I'm not sure when we call it York Memorial, which building we have, which building has the pool? And if it's the old building, I'm asking, are we in the plans to rebuild it? Are we rebuilding the pool inside the?
Thank you. And through the chair, so the original York Memorial building, which we're currently rebuilding, there is a pool attached to it, but that pool is owned by the city. It was not dam, it was minimally damaged by the fire and the city is looking after that pool and probably will open it. And there is a pool in the current York Memorial, which was the former George Harvey.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pivot a little bit to something one of my colleagues shared earlier around this issue of equity. We do a lot of equity work in the board. I think it's a really good thing that we do. But I too object to it being used in in this manner in that the fact that all 380 or 582 schools don't have a pool, ergo, we have an equity problem. I I I just fundamentally disagree with the logic of that. I want to talk about through your chair congregated sites. If I understand correctly, two of the pools are located in congregated sites suited to assist students with dramatic special education needs. Is that correct?
Correct.
And are we, we we clearly can't find third parties to use those spaces. So are we, th- this proposal would would call for the closure of of the of those two pools in those congregated sites?
That's correct. It is included in the model.
Okay, to that end, did we, given the price, we all know that it costs for student transportation for the students who use our congregated sites? Have we factored in an analysis of what it would cost to take students and transport them once a week, however many times they're using the pool now, to the to a nearby pool so that they could get the programming that they currently have at an alter location? Or are we just talking about taking away this programming from these students in these congregated sites?
Thank you for the question. I think that there are a couple of options through through you, Trustee McLean. One would be the consideration of working alongside the city and having the city in charge of the programming in that pool. Another option would be to develop a program to support students work with their muscles that was not necessarily pool-related, but other programming to work the same kind of muscle tone, et cetera. But obviously, we would hope to have the ability to do Swim to Survive in the pools within the buildings.
Okay, I just. The Seneca, Seneca School is a school of my congregated site mine for element, you know, JK88 to student in in grade eight. It does, uh, I mean, it's a wonderful building and angels work in it. And it does not have a pool. But it has the good fortune to be located within 200 meters of the Utobicoal Olympium. And they will on occasion have the ability to take the students to. And the experience that gives the 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 experience of having students experience buoyancy and to be out of their chair and experience a different sensation of independence and freedom in the water is a a really exceptional thing and experience for them. And, you know, I think we have to think really hard and really long before we go down a route that suggests that students in our system with these dramatic needs, that we're going to create a scenario in which they are currently getting access to this education, access to this exercise, this development, and that we would do it in a manner that restricts that. I I I think this is a, we need to really think twice before we do that. And I'll just close with a a question about separate access. And I, because I do think, I under, I take my colleague, Trustee Laskin's point, but I do think there are community use components to this. And the notion that if it had a a separate entrance, that we could start permitting it out before 6:00 P.M. That, you know, if if it could control, that we could do it, or we could even make arrangements to do it two days a week when we knew the the programming that would exist in the building would only use it Monday to Wednesdays. And because it had a separate entrance, we could expand the usage so we could have our cake and eat it too, to a certain degree. We could, we could help offset the costs by having added permits and added rentals or added lease agreements within it and yet still have it an opportunity for the students within it and the students in nearby schools to to come and utilize the 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 community asset that the community paid for long before amalgamation. So I'll leave it with that. And with that, I'll turn it to, sorry, I'll take back the chair. Thank you, Trustee Hassan. Uh, Trustee Earhart.
Okay, thank you very much. I, uh, so I'm I'm the co-chair of the trustee co-chair of the Community Use of Schools Community Advisory Committee. So for the past two years, I've been in discussions with permit holders along with trustee Patel around permit rates. And I do want to start by conveying that I have been receiving a lot of messages from members of the Community Use of Schools Community Advisory Committee who who are frankly offended that we are considering this after we just increased their permit rates and also communicated to them that we would be seeking to bring in the caretaker cost next year. They have been working in good faith with us for several years to try to smooth the increases, which they pass on to members of our community through program registration fees. So this has been something that I have been, that we have been involved in collectively in our decision-making for several several months now. And I think it's important for all trustees to be aware of the concerns that I'm receiving there. I also want to flag that this proposal has several elements which affect student well-being and achievement. The first is the closure of the delivery of TDSB programs during the school day that form part of the Ontario Health Curriculum where pools exist. This has been something that has been in place in the city of Toronto for some time. There is nothing in the reports that speaks to how many thousands of children rely on this programming to learn to swim. The Ontario Health Curriculum's swimming program. I'm not clear if that is available tonight or if staff could answer that. But it is information I would like to have. I was given it for how many are taking Swim to Survive, but not swimming lessons as part of their curriculum during the school day. Thank you.
So are you asking?
Yes, I am asking. Do we know how many children are learning to swim as part of their school day in TDSB pools? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. And we do not have the actual numbers of those who are using it for specifically for physical education programming, either for by a particular course or by a particular section or a particular unit in individual classes. That is not data that the system collects at this point in time. Thank you.
Okay, I I think that is very important information for decision-makers to have to perform our responsibility as trustees around well-being and student achievement. My next question is how many children who are in intensive support programs benefit from these daytime curriculum-based programs in our schools? Thank you.
I'd have to take that question back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that trustee McLean asked about the impacts to congregated sites. Thank you very much. I also want to ask how many of these pools are considered accessible? Do we have that here tonight? Thank you.
Thank you. And through trustees, no, we do not have that. I I would hazard that the majority are not accessible, given the age of those pools.
Thank you. That is my understanding as well. However, some of which are not, some of those that I know of at congregated sites are not considered accessible. Others that are in our schools are some of the only accessible pools in the old city of Toronto. They are some of the only pools that can be accessed. Has that been mapped to what city, what staff presented to us for closures as potential closures? Thank you.
Through the chair, no, trustee, we have not mapped that here. We can certainly go back and look at the data and see.
Okay, thank you. So I I hope that these are questions that ground people and what the real impacts are around this to children. I have been an advocate at this board for pools at every single meeting or have had the opportunity to speak around pools. Every building that we have taken a vote on, I have asked, will there be a pool? I am committed to making sure that all kids don't just learn how to survive in water, that they thrive and swim in our city. I cannot believe we have a report that came to us seeking to close the Monarch Park Pool, which has a photo of Penny Alexia just outside it. I it, I can't believe it. I have two motions I would like to move. There's so much more work that needs to be done on this. I I, are we able to put the motions up now? Thank you very much.
Trustee Eard, I'm gonna, just if if I can beg your indulgence, if I can get you to hold, and I only have one other trustee on the list, if we could ask the other trustee that to go and then and then we'll go. Trustee Shen, please.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Just a few more things on programming, if you have, that would be helpful for us to know. I'm looking at the map and I'm looking at particularly Utobico and don't see a lot of TDSB schools with pools, but there is about six, seven that is city of Toronto pools. Do we collaborate with city of Toronto to offer opportunities for our children to have access to city of Toronto pools during school hours? Especially, for example, in Utobico?
So through the chair, I'm going to turn to the essentially assigned principal with respect to the question around whether or not we collaborate with the city of Toronto in areas like South Utobico, North Utobico, with respective pool programming.
Thank you. And through the chair, at this time, I do not have that data. Some schools might be using them for their own swim teams, but we do not use them for classes at this time.
Through the chair, and I just want to add to that, they would be likely part of the 5,500 students that would be doing Swim to Survive because those are done using city pools. So they would be accessing city pools to to complete the Swim to Survive program.
So my next question is, do you have the kind of distribution of the Swim to Survive program? If it is fully funded, what is the barrier in getting it done regardless of this particular closure, relighted report? Is Swim to Survive still possible for us to have 100% uptake?
Through the chair, with respect to access to Swim to Survive for more schools, we've increased the schools exponentially over the last three years. So we would need to look to the city and to our schools in order to expand into that area. So that is possible, yes.
So if it's fully funded, wouldn't it be beneficial for us to have our own pools as well to complement availability of pools to actually make sure every student is able to get the Swim to Survive program?
Through the chair, that's part of the the suggestion is to increase the use of Swim to Survive for all grade four students.
Sorry, my my question is basically, what was the barrier if it's fully funded? And we have pools that are with city and we also have our own pools that is 66. What was the barrier in in getting more students enrolled in it? Like, what, is it logistical or on staffing or what was the barrier? And and it is not, it's packaged in this report, but it is not contingent on the fact that we need to close the pools to do it, right? It it could be done regardless.
Through the chair, I'll go to the such as assigned principal, Lisa Edwards.
Through the chair. The city cannot hold any more of our TDSB schools because they also operate Toronto Catholic and the French program, Toronto French as well. So there's, we do not have any more available spots. Therefore, in order to get all students to go through the Swim to Survive program, just like all students would go through an outdoor education program, we would, you'd need to use TDSB school pools. Thank you.
Through the chair, and I just will speak to the the challenge there. City of Toronto staff, I believe, is unionized. Our staff is unionized. Swim to Survive is a city-run, the city runs that program on behalf of Swim to Survive. They will not use our pools to run the program during the school day because it's not our, our, it's, our staff would be, it has to do with the two unions. But that, I think that that's the the biggest challenge in using our own pools.
Okay. So is is that something for discussion possibly to to ensure that if pool capacity at the city is the limiting factor here in order to expand Swim to Survive and we have pools that we are considering closing, which there's a capacity, then there's staffing and it's like there are people who might be, if this goes ahead, losing jobs. So I don't, I don't get the fact that, you know, we we don't find a way to make this work for children. Anyway, so that's that's something I would be interested in knowing where the sign-up is. Then there's a, there's a comment about having a season of swimming swim team program across the board. What does it look like currently? And 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 do we have any sense of where the programming is at, where the program could be with with increased access? Sorry, it's, uh, page 26, number five. It says, in addition, swim teams would operate during the swim season in the same way across the board.
So through the chair, first, I wanted to point out that on page 25 of the report under negotiate with the city of Toronto, the last line says it is also an opportunity to assist in expanding the Swim to Survive program. So that is something that is contemplated through the city having operating pools in our area because we wouldn't be having programming there during the day. And I apologize. The second one about swim teams is that we do have some schools who operate swim teams more than just through that, the the smaller swim team season. I would equate to it if you have a basketball team and they're practicing all year for basketball as opposed to just for the basketball season. So that that would be the difference. Not not all of our schools do that, but there are some schools that do have swim teams that practice all through the year.
So do we currently have swim teams that are only in, do we have a map of where which schools have swim? do we have a map of where, which schools have swim teams? And are they mostly located in schools that have swimming pools?
Through the chair, I'm not sure if we have that information, but we do have a number of swim teams that are not, are from pools or schools that do not have pools. They would access the city pools in order to be able to either practice that sort of thing, and see nodding heads behind you that you can't see. So I'm just reiterating that.
Yeah, I think just to reiterate the point, the distribution of the location is an equity issue, but at the same time, how we address that is to buy building more, increasing access, collaborating more, and valuing the program for expansion. So I think, you know, if swim teams are developing in places and could collaborate, if the city pools in Etobicoke, for example, could become a partnership where city is using our pools in some places to increase access, I think there's a lot of opportunities to kind of improve this at a citywide level. My last set of questions is, though I think we need to discuss about programming for children, I want to get a sense of these two privately operated leased positions. Are they also being asked for cost recovery? Why wouldn't, if they're private, why wouldn't that be a bit of a profit generation? Is there, is there no scope for it? Are they already being charged enough? Like, so I'm not quite sure if they're privately operated, why is there a cost recovery benchmark?
Through the chair, if we can look at how we provide that and see if there's an opportunity for revenue generation. Again, we would work with TLC in order to provide an opportunity for anybody across the city of a period of time to show interest in it, and we can set the parameters accordingly.
Yeah, because it will be helpful, as trustee Patel asked, to kind of separate out the city and the private ones, so that we know what the difference is. That, I mean, I don't know the program, so I don't want to guess, but if the private one could be charging students $500 per month to run the program, where a city is also doing cost recovery for free programming for neighborhood kids. So I, I just think that it'll be helpful to have a bit of a differentiation between the, between the two, two places that we discussed. Yeah, I think that's about it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Trustee Erhert, you have multiple motions, I understand?
Yes, I have multiple motions around this report, as well as the survey. We can start with the...
You have a pools, do you have a pools motion?
Not, not pool specific, it's about the whole report. But there's elements that are specific to pools within. And, and we're at 10 o'clock, so I'm prepared to move the whole thing now.
Oh, sorry, so this has aquatic but other things in it?
It does, yeah.
This is broader than, yeah, given the time, I think we can see how it goes. We can put it on the floor, and we can make questions about, see how many questions people want to ask about the areas that may be within it that, you know, we haven't talked about yet, and see where that goes.
Yeah.
Trustee Alaska?
Mr. Chair, I'm also very aware of the time, and there's a motion on stopping the survey, which is very time sensitive. And I'm, I'm concerned that we're going to run out of time before that would also be placed. So I'm asking your thoughts about what to do about that, too.
Okay, like, I do agree to the timely nature of the matter, and there's zero chance, at the rate we're going at, that we're going to get through this list tonight. Thank you. We're not going to do that. So suggesting that we could do that as a priority over the other is just unrealistic in terms of, of time. So we'll deal with, we're gonna have to try to figure out what we're gonna do with this first, and then we'll do the timely nature. We'll take the second. So we'll try to put this on the floor, and we'll see where this goes in terms of trustee, questions that trustees have, because this can be, we can either be really quick, or it could, you know, we could spend a lot of time going down this, depending on how far we want to go. So trustee Erhert and trustee Rajwani, you're seconding? Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, sorry, I just want to ask for clarification regarding this motion. Is this specifically regarding the aquatic?
There's a compotion, there's a portion of it that can, that is, as a, there's a portion of the motion has an aquatic element.
So, but, but which part are we voting for? Are we voting the whole motion, or voting for a part of the motion? Because I do see that no cuts to staff allocations have ever discussed with this part? I, I just don't know whether this motion is really in order, but, although I'm not on committee, I apologize, I'm not on committee, but I want to understand, it's like, what are the other trustees voting for? It's like, if a staff allocation not even discussed?
Through the chair, may I speak to the motion to the committee?
Sure, you're entitled to do it either way. So we'll let you, we'll give you the five minutes to speak to the motion.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, and I'm grateful for your questions, trustee P. They're very relevant, so I appreciate it. I wanted to, I'm putting forward this motion now. It is no cuts to staffing in 2025 aquatics. It, I feel, we have had the pools discussion, though not for the rest of the proposal. However, the first part of this, well, I am, I'm suggesting that we send the report back to staff, but with the first direction to respect previous board motions, restaffing allocations for the 2526 budget, as the director is required to implement board motions. And so this gets to our previous staffing allocations of, of all of the staff that we have allocated to date that are being proposed or considered within this report to be considered part of the cuts. And so that relates to, as I understand it, aquatic staff. It relates to outdoor education. It relates to child and youth workers. It relates to vice principals. It relates to safety monitors. It relates to many, many, many roles that are important in our schools. There are also many, many other roles that this does not relate to, who are still important in our schools. And I, I just want to say that we see you too, but I think it's very important to move this at this time. The second piece is no further actions on cuts to staff positions before 202526 core education funding is assessed. We are still waiting for the province's budget 2025. They could choose to fund public education and the programs that children rely on. Once we have assessed what they have chosen to fund, then we will need to make the decisions that we need to make. But until that time, I see no reason why we would continue. It is in their hands. Point C, continue with summer 2025 aquatics permits in permitted pools. My understanding is that some of these permits have not yet gone through. That may or may not be related to the discussion we're having, but I think it's very important for public confidence that these be processed with urgency, and so that our children can continue into the summer aquatics programs that they rely on to learn to swim and to continue in their learning that leads them to become the aquatics instructors and lifeguards and Swim to Survive teachers of tomorrow. Now, D, request the CEO, Toronto Lands Corporation, to report back on innovative opportunities to achieve at a minimum cost recovery for as many owned pools as possible through agreements with third parties for any locations that are not required under any agreement with the City of Toronto. This one is difficult for me. I support innovative opportunities, but I am a staunch advocate for public swimming in public pools for the City of Toronto and Toronto's children. This being said, we need all hands on deck. We need to be looking at what we can do. We are coming out of the pandemic, where we have so many children in this city that were not able to go into pools and learn to swim. They were not able to play in bands, get music instruction. We are just starting to build back from all of that. We cannot, at this moment in time, retreat from the programming that Toronto's children need, not just to survive, but to thrive in a modern 21st century economy. And so I'm very hopeful that my FBAC colleagues will support this motion, and that we will continue in all of our work in support of Toronto's children. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Erhert. We're gonna take a five-minute recess while I meet with Ms. Seville and Ms. Joseph Dowers to try to figure out whether A is the implications of A, and whether it's actually in order. So we're gonna, we're gonna take, we're hopefully five minutes, everybody. And I will acknowledge that that may have been more than five minutes. And we're live?
Back conservative.
We're good? Okay. So thank you, and we're back in session. Okay. We have determined that we are going to change in A, we're going to change the word respect to comply, and I have got the approval of the mover and the seconder. And that will be, while it is redundant from a, it is not out of order. So we're free to double down on that. And that will not take away, to be, we want to be railing up front so we know what we're talking about here. It will not take away the option later on for reconsideration, but some of the positions that are in that will have gone beyond the point at which it would be relevant for next school year, and would therefore apply as direction going further. That's not just, it's just an acknowledgement that what this means, okay, and what it doesn't mean, okay? So we're just making it clear what it does. B, we're gonna delete the word actions. And again, I've talked to the mover and seconder. We're gonna delete the word actions, no further, so that we'll read no further cuts to staff positions for the 2526 core education funding is released and assessed. Okay, so we're gonna get the document. Staff needs a week to evaluate it and tell us exactly what it means. Okay, so the ramifications of the change are is that there are certain protected groups tomorrow that staff will have the ability to. But the ultimate ramification of what happens was yet to be determined, and that the board will decide later on in the process. So this, we will keep our options open. The board will, but it will commit to taking no, no cuts to staff positions before we formally know exactly where we stand, exactly where the number is, and exactly what, if the number's higher, and we need another list of, we'll know what that is before we're making these choices. Okay? So that's what the determination with the mover and the seconder, and with legal and governance staff, and the director.
And.
Yeah, just changes to the comply in A, getting the word actions in B, and adding the word released and replacing is with and. Comply, did you? Okay, comply with, we're good to do, apparently. Grammatically, being grammatically correct. Is, is, okay. I just want, I just want to make sure it's accurate, and then we'll open the floor to, to talk about it. No further. In A, all we change is, we're gonna comply with, apparently, to be grammatically correct. In B, we're gonna take out the word actions, so no, or actions on. So we're gonna say no further cuts to staff positions before the 23, 2526 core funding is released and assessed. Okay, and with that, you've got 14 seconds. Trustee Erhert, I trust you're done with your, you're done. Trustee Rajwani, do you want to speak to this? I appreciate that. And a question was, sorry, the director would like to have a moment?
Thank you, Chair, and through you to the mover and seconder of the motion. If we can have some clarity on B, that would be helpful, so that staff is clear on the meaning and the implications for, for anything we might do. So does B, in terms of no further cuts to staff position for 202526, mean that, that there is no, that staff would not be in a position to move forward with any collective agreement requirements that would keep options on the table open for trustee decisions within this budget cycle? And so specifically, if any actions are required in the, in collective agreements? And so specifically, if any actions are required in the, in collective agreements for any time-sensitive matters, is this direction to staff not to proceed with such actions that keep options open for trustee decision-making later on in the process?
So through the Chair, I put this to trustees here. I have not supported any of the cuts that we have done. So I don't feel that we need options on the table. I won't support them. But this is a motion for all trustees, and so if other trustees would like to speak to any other interpretations, please, please feel free. Thank you.
Sorry, I need, I need you to, I think we need to decide and then talk about it. If, whichever way you go, then people will be free to amend if they like or offer an amendment if they like, but we can't talk as though we have two options on the table. So you have to decide.
Okay. It's, I mean, for me, no further cuts means no reduction in staff positions until we, as a board, have been able to assess the 25, 26 core education funding from the province.
Right. But what, what the Director requested was not about actual cuts, was, if I understood correctly, he was inquiring about the ability in, to meet contractual obligations about potential notice of actions that would then be later determined by the board. So it's, there, there's no cuts that would take place. This is just about, if I'm understanding correctly, about whether staff would be free to issue notices inappropriate to meet timelines so that the, would keep the options of trustees open throughout the process.
So is the board obligated to provide direction on that? Isn't that operational in that sense?
If you pass, if we pass a motion tonight that says, we direct them not to take any actions in that direction, then we were warned by, it was suggested by Legal that then the letters, the potential issuing documents to meet contractual obligations would be in violation of the direction. Trustee, see you asking.
Mr. Chair, A and B are there for a reason. A is about board motions on staffing that the board has made for staffing for 2025, 2026 through motion. And that was, that, those motions were approved at the special board on May 5th. Part B is there that says no further cuts. They haven't been brought to us yet, so we don't want to see any motions on further cuts to staff positions for 25, 26 before funding is released and assessed. That does not mean, because those aren't board, we're not talking about more motions here, this does not preclude collective agreement provisions from going through, in my opinion, or that was not the intent of B, because the board motion positions are covered in A.
Right. But I asked the lawyer, and the lawyer said that it, just the contrary of what your opinion was, is that the, the, taking away the, well, you can, paraphrasing you seems like a bad idea. Why don't I, I pass you the floor and you share?
Thank you, and through you, Chair. Staff are looking for clarification on section B and what that means. Are the trustees directing staff not to bring forward any further options that would amount to cuts to staff? If that is the case, then we are taking off the table, we are taking away the option of any further cuts. That is different than saying, you can still bring us options forward and please ensure that you put us in a position to make a further determination down the line. And that is what staff are looking for clarification on, please.
So I am of the view, this is semantics, I do agree, but I am of the view that I don't want to see any more proposals that are cutting staff. I don't want to see them personally. I don't want to see them. The solution here is for the Minister of Education and for the minister's colleagues to adequately fund education based on a consistent record from this school board and other school boards, asking them that identifying gaps for the benefit of students, student well-being and achievement, as is our obligation. When funding is insufficient, we either make cuts or grow funding. We are unable to grow funding on our own. I am saying we are unable to cut any further. And so I don't believe it makes sense for the board to be receiving proposals for cuts. I believe the solution is in the hands of the Minister of Education, who could choose by way of a budget through their government to increase the funding for education, or has also said that they could choose to take us under supervision. And so I feel that this is now their choice in this. I have done what I could in my role as trustee, to ask questions and to seek, to make it known how critical the underfunding has become. I hope that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and it's your motion, and we've talked, apparently we haven't. Director Latush.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. And I appreciate your sentiments, Trustee Earhart. And please understand that I don't mean to frustrate you or the board. However, staff have a desire to make sure that we're following the direction of trustees with clarity. And, and in that regard, I think while the sentiments are clear, the direction on action that staff may or may not take is unclear, is unclear to me. And so I think specifically, it would be necessary for staff to hear very clearly that notwithstanding options that may or may not be brought forward in future reports, whether staff can proceed tomorrow with issuing surplus notices. I think it needs to be, that needs to be explicit and clear to staff so that we can be sure that we are following through and complying with the clear direction of trustees.
Right. So the word, if you include the word actions, they won't be able to say notices. If you take the words actions, they will be able to issue the action, and we will decide later. We can, we just need you to decide, and the trustees could.
I thought we'd already proposed your no further cuts, so the word action isn't there. So I believe that's clear.
No, but then we wanted to clarify, and then if you're content, either way, we're, either way, it's open to amendment, either way. If, if the majority feel differently, we just need to, I thought we agreed to take, and then it seemed that staff wanted direction, I thought you seemed to prefer a different path, so that it really is up to you, whether, the word actions has ramifications to it, that's all. And it's your motion. If you want actions in, that's what we'll put on the floor.
Oh, sorry, no further cuts. That's what, what I'd ask, no further cuts to staff positions before the 25, 26 core education funding is released and assessed. So staff can continue to work on the options that they need to work on, but I don't see the sense in us discussing anything until we know the core education funding, as we have requested numerous times, that there, the criticality and the urgency of measures to address the chronic underfunding. Those measures could be regulatory through the lifting of the moratorium, they could be through the budget by providing more funding, they could be through changes in other areas that could be achieved through discussion. And so that is why we've also moved those motions. I hope that makes sense. I just don't think we, as a board, can assess cuts to staff positions until we know that answer. I hope that's helpful.
It is. So we will leave it as it appears on the screen, and we're free to do, trustees are free to make amendments if they're so inclined. Trustee Shan.
The fear of confusing this even further, when you send back a report to staff and say no further cuts, it then implies you're okay with the cuts that's already in the report. Because when, when you are saying, you know, you're sending this report back, you're saying no further cuts, it is, you know, I, we understand the logic here, but if you take it out later, it is, it is saying, you know, this is your report, we receive it, but no further cuts. So I do think the word further gives a different meaning, because the report is being sent back after being received, after being, you know, presented for receipt. So I, I feel like there's clarity needed on that. I don't know how I would suggest an amendment maybe, with the following directions, to remove proposals for cuts to staff positions before, before the, you know, that just makes it even harder for sending the letters out, but I just feel like, I just feel like this, this only communicates future cuts, not the ones that are being proposed.
Don't worry. Through you, Mr. Chair, can trustees direct the committee to stop doing its job?
I'm sorry? I don't understand the question, Trustee Lee.
Are trustees allowed to make a motion to prevent the committee from doing its job and serve its function?
I think the committee is currently making a recommendation to have the committee which is to proceed. Is that not what?
But, but if the committee stopped considering the budget options during budget season, and there's one month left, are we, and given that this committee is here by statute and legislation, are we essentially saying that we refuse to serve the purpose of this committee?
I think the only thing that, there is a timeline, there is a timeline being suggested. It's not a firm calendar date, but it refers directly to the receipt and the analysis of the core funding announcement. So the committee would approve no further, would take no formal action until we had the knowledge, that the, the full knowledge that is forthcoming, that the government is going to make its statement, we are going to analyze it, and all this is doing is suggesting before we know everything, we're going to ultimately know that no additional cuts will be approved or considered. So I don't find that, I don't find the motion in itself out of order, as it pertains to be.
Okay. But, but because I've been hearing the movers say that, you know, we don't want to hear any options being proposed, we don't want staff to come, give us proposals. What, what, what's if, what this motion is effectively doing is, it's forcing us to wait to the last moment, when we're out of time, when we don't have time to ask questions, we're due further analysis, we're asked for further report. When the budget comes, when the funding, if the funding comes out one day before the budget is due, because the government can choose to do that, we'll have to make a decision on the spot. I, I think, I, I hear you from a language perspective, there is a limit, but in actuality, it is preventing this committee from actually making reasonable decisions because it is taking away from us time to, to deliberate, to analyze, and to actually consider those decisions. So in essence, what this motion is doing is rendering this committee ineffective.
I think this is for me to decide. While I, I don't agree that, I don't disagree that that is conceivable, I don't think that that is the spirit of what this will do, nor do I find it to be likely to be that we will get an announcement. If we get the funding the day before, there will be lots of, we will be doing all kinds of things at that time. So I don't find this to limit the committee's ability in the, in the manner in which, through the scenario you described, is realistic enough to be affected here.
Chair, because, because I feel like we owe credit for your duty to our students and community, and because I think to stop considering the budget during budget season is, has the potential of causing irreversible harm to the, to the board, I am challenging, I'm challenging on that decision, Chair.
Okay. Thank you. So Ms. Joseph Dowers, Trustee Lee has challenged the decision of the Chair. Do you want to take us through how that works? Yeah, there's, I prefer you do this. Once we, once we've challenged the Chair, there's no discussion on any level. I don't discuss why I made the decision. He doesn't get to no longer discuss why he objects to the decision. We're going to formally go through the procedure. Trustees are going to determine whether they support or deny the challenge, and then we're free to have, depending on how that goes, then the floor opens again. Yeah, we're really just. Right. He made a question, he, sorry, you clear, like, he's questioning my ruling, so I'd prefer to stay out of this.
Right. So Trustee Lee, you are raising a question of personal privilege and challenging the Chair. So the Chairman declared recess in order to consider what you are raising?
Okay. I thought I raised the point of order, but that's fine. I'll go with what you think is the best, this is best defined.
A point of order is a.
I don't think anyone has, personally, I'm, I'm, I'm challenging the order.
The decision of the committee, of the Chair, right? You're challenging the decision of the committee Chair?
Correct.
Okay. Hold on a second.
So you're to run the process.
Those in support of the Chair? The Chair will take this vote on upholding the decision of the Chair. So trustees will do it by show of hands, or saying, aye, first we will vote on upholding the decision of the Chair, those in favor. Upholding the decision of the Chair, yes. Could I, to make this easier, could I please call the committee members by name, trustee McLean?
Do I vote?
Yes.
Am I voting this?
Yeah.
So. So I, I vote yes.
Trustee Deidre Vittis?
I vote yes.
Trustee Earhart? Trustee Hassan? Trustee Lee?
Determinedly with grave concerns towards the integrity of this committee? No.
Trustee Rajwani? Trustee Wong?
Yes.
Thank you. The decision of the Chair is upheld.
Trustee Patel, no.
Trustee Nunzi, out of votes, no, sorry, Dan.
Sorry. I mean, the.
I call the members of the committee. Trustee Shan?
This isn't special committee.
Trustee Shan? This is FBAC. Trustee Patel?
No.
Thank you, the decision of the chair is upheld.
Okay, and just to be clear, we're no longer in the special meeting, we're in FBK. And as such, only FBK members get to vote. Okay, so now we have, so what's on? Trustee Shen, when you had the floor, did you offer an amendment or just can, offer concerns?
Point of order, chair. I asked numerous times to speak on the motion, trustee Shan already spoke once. And I have asked repeatedly that I need clarification on the motion. And I'm not getting that chance to speak, right? Don't get, I don't know why.
Okay, well, we had to deal with the cha, challenge to the chair, his point of order. I just wanted to clarify where it was left with trustee Shen. He didn't offer amendment and you're, you were done, are you not, sir?
Yeah, just to clarify, I was speaking and it was the point of order raised by trustee Lee, so that's why I went to that, I'm, I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
It's not the second time, so I'm just finished.
Right, and there's, he offered no amendment, he shared his concerns, we'll vote depending on his conscience. So trustee Patel. I know.
Uh, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to hear from Director Litushon A. That if he complies with all the board motions, the previous ones, does that mean that the deficit increases because now there was a proposal from staff to make cuts on the swimming instructors? So that will go on pause. Does that mean that the motion, the, the deficit increases now? I need clarification on part A, because now through this motion, you have to comply with the previous board, board motions.
Ms. Seville, are you in position to address this?
Uh, thank you, and through you, through you, chair, I'll start and ask AD Sarisco to, to pick it up. I think a primary concern is that options that have been presented, if they are removed, including any potential reconsideration of, of previous direction from the board, then, then that would reduce the ability of staff to present options for balanced budget. And AD Sarisco will add to that.
Thank you, and AD Zucker may have the details that I do not, or Mr. Snyder, comply with previous board motions, trustee Patel, regarding staffing allocations for 2526. The board approved the staffing allocation rollout. So that would tell us to maintain that. Some of the options that are before the board in appendix E summarized include reductions from the previously approved staffing allocations. So, again, this is for receipt, the committee is not making decisions today. So this part A is really in keeping with the discussion, there's no decision. And we trust that the board, as it approaches June 30th, will give direction in regards to the reductions that are necessary to get to balance, I hope that helps. Of import, and I'm sorry, I was out of the room and, and you may have already deliberated. Staff need very, very clear direction on what the word cuts means and for consideration to the mover. If cuts were replaced with surplus notice, provision of surplus notice.
We did this while you were out of the room.
Thank you very much, trustee McLean. I'll turn to my colleagues to understand what that means.
And to that point, and again, I apologize if in any way the question appears to frustrate members of the board. But to that point, in trustees deliberation, I think I've heard two different conceptions of what number two means. So with that, I do think that it's a fair question to make sure that everyone leaves with a common understanding, including any direction that staff need in order to take action or not take action. It would be helpful to know what number two means in respect of specifically surplus notices. Just so that I can be sure that all members of the board have the same understanding and that staff are leaving with the same understanding, so that we can follow the clear direction of the board. And then just to clarify the, to reiterate the point in respect of trustee Patel's question. If they say aquatic instructors, as an example, were off the table and could not be brought back for, for the consideration, in order for staff to meet our, and the directors specifically to meet our statutory obligations, we would need to seek other cuts if the core education funding does not provide the increases necessary to allow the board to, to achieve a balanced budget through that means.
Okay, thank you. Initially, I need a mover and a seconder to extend till 11:30. Trustee Rajwani, trustee Ehart, all in favor? All opposed? That passes, okay. So the answer to your question, which we clarified earlier, that we have taken the word, we have taken the word actions out. So you are free to carry on, if I'm, if I, when we did this, if I understood correctly, you are free to issue the notices tomorrow and the, the decision will come later down the road, whether trustees act on it and trustees will decide later. But you will have the opportunity to continue with your notices and so that the options are still available. If you do not issue the letters, the option does not exist.
May, may I, appro, for, again, for clarification, trustee McLean, so again, we're crystal clear. Then, then I'm wanting to understand what the intention is of B, is the intention for the mover that staff do not provide further options? Because we are not making cuts. That's the role of the board before June 30th. Are we not providing options? What does cuts mean? Because we, we are not making cuts. And if, if I also, while you're thinking about that, trustee Ehart, trustee Patel, going back to A, your question about A. I want to draw attention to, in appendix A, an option is reduction of positions originally funded by one-time funding. And that was approved staffing. So that removes $10.3 million for trustee consideration.
I'm good, thank you.
It was your question and you're happy with the answer, I haven't got a clue with that discussion, however, that's fine. Anybody else want to speak to this? Seeing and hearing none.
Chair, I have put my name on the list three times since.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, uh, thank you, trustee Lee, I apologize for missing you, it wasn't conveyed to me. You have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, I just want to, so, so I just want to confirm from, from everything that we heard. We are not going to receive any more options on budget reductions from staff until the budget has been released, that the funding has been really, released. If this motion passes.
Who's the question directed to, trustee Lee?
Anyone who, who has an answer, I'm confused. Staff?
Trustee, the, the mover will be, the movie will entertain the.
So trustee Lee, my understanding of no further cuts to staff positions, when I wrote it, I was thinking beyond this budget timeframe. I was thinking about all of the cuts that have been made since I've served as a trustee. And so that was that, that was how I, I came to it in the crafting of it. In terms of the, how I envision direction to staff, I mean, I personally, I, I don't want to see any more proposals. I want to see the budget released. That is not, that is a personal opinion. How this motion is not directing that to happen in this way. Of course, staff would continue in their operational duties to prepare options, exercising due diligence in line with the situation that we face. But we as a board are articulating that our approach is that we, is that we feel it is important and critical to understand what the Ministry of Education is choosing to fund us with. And this is taken alongside motions that we have all approved to engage the ministry and seek to collaborate with them on areas that are outside of our board's control. Is that helpful? And, and thank you.
Sorry, through Mr. Chair, is the motion saying the board should not make a budget, should not form a budget before the funding is released?
Yes.
Okay, so why, is it, can I ask, can I ask you through, through you, Mr. Chair of the committee, to Chair of the Board, Nathan Shen, trustee Shen, if it is your intention to call a budget vote in your board meeting agenda before we have the funding?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, I think how I understand this is before we.
I think he asked you if you were prepared to call a budget vote before we were, receive the core funding announcement.
No, I, I think we've always waited for the core funding to, to actually make sense of the budget. It, we prepare ahead of time, but we have always passed it with that number because otherwise it would not make sense. So the numbers that come from core funding announcement from the ministry is critical part of the budget deliberation, that's why the budget gets passed after that, as you know, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you both chairs, I just, this is where my confusion comes from. We have never called a vote on a budget before the core funding is released. So why, why do we need a motion to say that this year? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through the chair, this is, this is my first year on finance committee. And, and so it may not have been done in the past by committee members. It is a motion I am moving and, and because it is, it is direction I feel that is important to convey as a board in advance of a budget from the ministry where they could choose to fund public education. And I hope, I hope that's helpful as a, as a committee, we, we'll have to make the votes that we make and, and proceed. I, thank you.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense. I, I, I get you, no, I'm, I'm not saying that you can't do it, I just, it confused me drastically. Question three on C, continue summer 2025 aquatics programs. Through you, Mr. Chair to staff, I thought those programs are funded through this year's budget. Like the 2024 budget, because our fiscal year ends at the end of summer.
Uh, through you, chair, to trustee Lee, the summer 2025 is part of this current school year in the funding model. And so you are correct that they would be funded through this year's budget and the permit fees and so forth would be in line with this year's operations.
Okay, so through Mr. Chair, just to confirm, C will happen regardless of what we do here?
Yes, C is apparent, yeah, apparently redundant.
Okay, all right, so I, team, I'm, given B and C really have very little impact to our decision-making, I, 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 you know, I, I'm, I'm not against it. I, I don't think we should pass a budget before we have the funding. And I don't think we should stop funding things that we already budgeted for, especially we are actually on track to hit our target this year when it comes to budget. I, I do have a, I, I just do want to make a point on the conversation we had tonight, right? I, I think we as trustees, we, we, we have a duty to advocate for public education. And as, as governors of this board, you know, it is within our role to get the maximum amount of funding and resources available so that our staff can do their jobs. But I do think it is also our role to make decisions. We have picked, we have chosen to do this job, to be entrusted by our community, to make decisions on scarce funding. When we, when, when we, when we say that we don't want to make any cuts, we're essentially saying that we do not want to make these choices that are entrusted to us by the community. Funding will never be unlimited. Without limits, without decision-making, there can be no governments, governance, and there can be no operations. And imagine if every department, every organization asks the same from the government to say, we will always ask for more and will never make decisions to, to, to stop doing certain things. Our, our society will not continue. So I, I, I fundamentally, I'm challenged when this board takes a position or this committed, committee takes a position to say, we will not make these decisions, even though it is our jobs. So I am here prepared to make these difficult decisions and I will face my community when I make them because that's what they have hired or elected me to do. And I encourage every member of this board to do the same. It is our job. Now, if we don't make that decision, that's not a non-decision. We have said we're incapable of doing these jobs, we don't know what we're doing and we want to hand it over to the province. Whether or not you like that decision or not, you chose and agreed to do this when you took this job. So I, I encourage everyone to continue to be the responsible trustees that we have been and let's just, you know, make the decisions that needs to be made. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to hear trustee Dede Vitis. And then the director has asked for a restep, a recess to confer with legal, I know. Trustee Dede Vitis.
Uh, thank you, chair. Um, I'll be brief, I'm, I'm just confused by, by the last speaker. And I know we can have different opinions. Um, but waiting until we have all the information from the Ministry of Education because they're late in providing the financial details of how we're going to be funding, it's not new, we did it last year as well. And there was a provincial election which delayed the process. So, you know, not wanting to face up to a decision that we're going to do later is what I'm hearing. And I, I really, I don't agree with the character station of what we're looking at doing here. And so I'll be supporting the motion. I think it's the responsible thing to do. I, I think the Education Act looks us to do more than balancing a budget. We're here not just as corporate managers, but as citizens looking to build a public education system. And so, you know, we, we, we need to be responsible how we do that. So pass it on to my colleagues, make the responsible decision, not to make rushed decisions when, before we have all the information that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, and with that, we've completed the speakers list, we're going to have a brief recess and then we're going to open the vote.
There's a survey vote coming.
Are we live? Thank you. Okay. We're back in session. Thank you, everyone, for your indulgence. Yeah, yeah, I'm familiar. Thank you. And since we're there, I'll need a motion. I'm not going to be naive about this, to extend for half an hour till midnight. Thank you, motion by trustee Rajwani, seconded by trustee Hassan, all in favor. Those opposed, none. So that passes, oh, sorry, trustee Patel is opposed. I can appreciate the sentiments, but it it passes. Okay, so B, because we've had a lot of discussion, we're going, I'm going to again clarify that B as written. Here's that staff will continue to take all actions under collective agreements that will allow staff to continue to present options to trustees that could result in in cuts after the release of the assessment of the core funding, core education funding. Our lawyer writes like a doctor, so I'm having trouble with the, but, okay. So the, the, the gist of this is what is on the floor, if passed, will allow staff to issue statements, to issue notices tomorrow. That's what it says. Okay, so that's what we're voting on. Vote, you know, people can, nay or nay. That's what, that, that's what it will mean if it passes. Okay.
Mr. Chair, so what's on screen? Because what you said is a little bit different from what's on screen right now.
Yeah, we did you? Did you want me to read it again, trustee Lee? Because we don't have time, given what's in front of us.
If you don't mind, can you just read it again? Because it didn't register me, what registered to me while you're reading that was a motion.
I'm sorry?
Can you read it again if you don't mind? Thank you.
Yes, please. Staff will continue to take all actions under collective agreements that will allow staff to continue to present options to trustees that could result in staff cuts after the release and assessment of the 2025-26 core education funding.
Thank you, that is much clearer. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So that is option B now? That is an amendment being proposed?
No, that's just, that's just clarification of what B means. There was a little concern that we were talking, we talked around it a little bit. We talked about different interpretations. This is the legal interpretation of what that means. And just so that we're all on the same page when we vote. And with that, we'll open the vote, please.
Trustee Rajwani in favor.
Sorry? Yeah, sorry, sorry. Trustee, trustee, I've, we've closed the speakers list before we went into this. So we're not going to hear any, from any further trustees. Trustee Patel did mention before, and I apologize, my mistake, I apologize. He did mention that he made his request at Siri Adam before I asked for the vote to be open. And because we haven't, we're going to do that. So we will vote at Siri Adam. So we will vote for A. Please open the vote. McLean in favor.
The witness in favor.
Trustee Patel against.
Trustee Rajwani in favor.
Trustee Arhur in favor.
Shan in favor.
Trustee Lee, how do you vote, sir?
Lee voted in favor.
Thank you. In favor. And that closes, that passes. So now we will go to B. Please open the vote.
Trustee Patel against.
McLean in favor.
Shan in favor.
Trustee Lee is against.
Trustee Lee is against?
Yep.
The witness in favor.
Rajwani in favor.
Shan in favor.
Trustee Shan is in favor. Are we good?
Patel in favor.
Trustee Rajwani in favor.
It is redundant, but it's not, sorry, hold, hold. Trustee, sorry, B, did we, did B pass or fail? B passed.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I was looking, didn't see it. B passed, thank you. So now we're on to C, the vote is open. Yes, it's, it's redundant, but it isn't out of order. That doesn't make it out of order. So it's live, we've opened the vote, McLean in favor.
Lee is in favor.
Trustee Patel in favor.
Trustee D Dividas, how do you vote, sir?
In favor.
Thank you. And that passes. And D, open, please open the vote. McLean in favor.
Trustee Patel in favor.
The witness in favor.
Shan in favor.
Hassan in favor.
Trustee Lee, how do you vote, sir?
Lee voted in favor.
Thank you. Trustee Rajwani?
In favor.
Thank you. And that carries, thank you. Thanks for everybody's indulgence in working that through.
Through the chair, I do have another motion to move.
Which one?
This is around the survey.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's two other motions, written notices, a motion for consideration. I like to move direct to board after this, but I'd like, first we can consider.
Right, we're going to deal with, we'll deal with the survey, it's timely, needs to be done. There's an issue about how, when we could implement it because we're, even if we vote in favor of it, it doesn't become actionable until it passes at board, which will be after the period in which it closes. But
And and through the chair, the last report, we return that report back to staff for clarification with our A, B, C, D, when we went at Siri Adam, just for clarification. Oh, was the first sentence? Okay, thank you.
Okay. And you've seconded by trustee Rajwani, did you want to speak to this? Trustee Laskin, did you, you're on the speakers list. Trustee Laskin?
Yeah, so just in terms of moving this motion, we're moving on behalf of trustee Arts and I I am happy to move it and grateful that trustee Arts put this together. This survey has been deeply hurtful to community, particularly the community of those caring for children with special needs. And this has come during Autism Awareness Month, during a month where the special needs community in particular is feeling a great deal of apprehension, given a broader global context. And so I just, I want to say that very explicitly in this meeting. And and it's just a real, I hope that that we will all carefully consider. While we, as a board, may, may choose, I hope we never do, to disregard our human rights obligations to those with exceptionalities. I, I, I don't believe that ever should have been on the survey personally. And I hope that when we, as a board, through our budget processes, issue communications, that, that we, that we continue to give great consideration of that. And so this motion is around closing the pre-budget survey as it's currently worded, so to close it and then ensure that further public surveys pertaining to board responsibilities include feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Laskin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, a couple of points I'd like to make. Through you, Mr. Chair to staff, did we not set up a communications committee of trustees that were to be informed and involved in budget communications? Through you, Mr. Chair to staff.
Through the chair, yes, we did set up the trustee budget, trustee communications working group. In this case, it was a little bit unique, if I may, in that in previous years, we received board motion directing us to do the survey. And this year, we did not. I'm happy to address whatever question you may have.
Mr. Chair, did we, or did we not include a survey as part of our communication report that came to board about the things we were going to do that Mr. Snyder brought to board that included consultation with community? And didn't it, did it not include the board's survey in it?
Through the chair, it may have, and I want to acknowledge that it may very well have, but I want to acknowledge that we did not go through the trustee communications working group for this particular one. It was handled entirely by staff, although we did receive some input from trustees. It was not put through the official trustee communications working group.
Right, so I think that that's important context here because that did not happen. A number of trustees asked the director to remove it and stop it. And that did not happen. So a couple of things happened here, including the survey as part of our community consultation was included in a board report that passed F Beck, that passed the board. A communications committee was set up specifically to deal with budget communications. Seldom used, was not asked to look at the survey. Trustees, including the, as I understand it, the Chair of F Beck had concerns about the wording of the survey before it went out. I'm not sure about the Chair of the Board. The survey went out, we immediately heard from community. A number of us asked that it be pulled. It was not pulled. And now you've made it clear that because this motion still has to go to board, which is after the date of the survey closure, that the survey will continue to be posted. So through you, Mr. Chair to the director, in good faith, because our own processes weren't followed and trustees were not involved in the survey, will you please stop the survey now before board? That's within your power.
Are you asking him or are you?
I am asking him.
Thank you.
Thank you. And through you, Chair, in response to the, to trustee Laskin's question, I'd like to make some remarks that may respond to that and answer other questions, if I, if I may.
Yeah, can you speak into the mic, sir? I, I thought it was just me, but apparently it's not.
So through you, Chair, in response to trustee Laskin's question, I'd like to make some remarks that, and then get to the question specifically. So I appreciate the opportunity to provide a little bit of background regarding the budget survey that seeks to elevate the opinions of all TDSB community members and is scheduled to close on Tuesday, May 6. Staff annually create a budget survey to serve, to support the board's deliberation on developing a balanced budget. So as you may know, this year's budget development process, and I know you know that, is extraordinarily challenging. And we spent a long time this evening, in addition to other conversations, discussing that. And has been, as has been previously shared in F Beck meetings, staff estimated an approximately $70 million deficit, which reduced to $58 million deficit with elimination of the carbon tax, as was shared by associate director Zucker earlier this evening. The deficit must be eliminated to enable the board to balance its budget on or before June 30th, as is required by the Education Act. And the director has certain obligations where that's concerned. And I appreciate through the deliberations this evening and in previous commentary, how different members of the board may feel about the obligation in respect of the provincial funding formula and, and everything at play. So while the ministry funding for next year has not yet been announced, it is clear that reductions in staffing, programs and services will be necessary if the budget is to be balanced as is required. Staff's first focus, as always, was to elevate as many community members' input as possible. And, and I acknowledge, as Executive Officer Ryan Byrd has, has indicated, that the Communications Committee did not weigh into the survey. So secondly, we wanted to, the survey to be transparent and to communicate the very real challenges before TDSB this year. The survey used the word reductions to transparently communicate that staffing, programs and services could be reduced depending on the options provided to trustees and the decisions trustees eventually make. It's important to note that the particular software used was not able to rank responses in an AODA compliant way. As such, the decision was to, was made to select five areas in total where savings could be found. where savings could be found. It's important to note as well that the options that were included for community response were the options that had been previewed in the previous board report, which was included in a link to provide that context as to why those options were there. And as such, I recognize that special education was presented there, not because staff was advocating for cuts in any way to any of those. And this board, the staff of this board would not be advocating for cuts to special education. However, this was an opportunity to be fully transparent as to all the areas where there is overspending, underfunding, or no funding at all. And special education, per the report, fit into that context. And it was also an opportunity for the public to respond as to where their priorities are in relation to any reductions that staff may put on the table for consideration of options. I will say that of the, almost 14, or rather over 14,000 community members that have responded at last check, preliminary view of the data indicates that the community is lining up where exactly staff presumed they would in respect of special education, not advocating for any cuts there whatsoever. And of note as well, special education was not put forward in any of the options for consideration by staff to trustees. So it was simply there to reflect the information that had been presented in the context of the report. So we truly felt that the information, given the constraints and how we collect the information, would be useful to trustees to indicate where community members recommend reductions, if any, are to be made. Some community members do feel that harm has been done because the positioning of the questions has been on reductions. And to be clear, the survey is not indicating decisions regarding the areas that have been outlined. They are all areas where investment has exceeded funding, and trustees will need to consider each of these areas in their deliberation, as you are doing tonight and onwards. An area of overspending does include, as I noted, special education, and so it was included in the survey. You will notice that, as I said, it's not in the options to balance. So regrettably, unless core education funding received by the Ministry of Education eliminates, pardon me, is received by, from Ministry of Education eliminates the Board's $58 million deficit, then reductions would be necessary if a balanced budget, if a balanced budget is to be achieved. And so on behalf of all staff, I appreciate this position is difficult to consider, and we are committed to developing programs that will meet the needs of students within the fiscal funding that is allocated. In respect of, in respect of the question about the survey, I want to respond to that directly. I do believe that the survey, notwithstanding everything that has been said, is of value. I believe the context of the survey. And upon feedback from trustees, we made edits to make it very clear that this was a staff-led survey at this point. I am not intending to frustrate trustees in any way. We have an incredible amount of feedback, I think almost double or more than double what would normally have been received in previous surveys, and it provides very valuable information. With that, I am, at this point, if trustees should provide direction tonight that the survey is to be removed, notwithstanding the fact that that direction will not be official until a formal board meeting, I will honor the spirit of that direction. But I do want to say that I believe that the survey makes very, very transparent what the reality that the Board is facing is, and I want to express appreciation to the more than 14,000 community members that have responded to date and may respond until the survey is closed, based on any direction from trustees, that I will look to honor.
Thank you, Director. You done? Trustee Laskin?
Yes, I don't have a vote on the committee, Mr. Chair, but I have chaired FPEC during my period as a trustee, and never before has a survey not come through trustees, because it is our role to communicate with our communities. It is our role. It is not staff's role to communicate with our communities. So the fact that we had a committee, a communications committee specifically set up to review budget communications, that was used, but not for this purpose. I just find it, and the fact that we've raised this consistently, while I appreciate the fact that the Director has made the offer to follow whatever the committee says before it goes to board, I must say I'm deeply, deeply disappointed that after hearing from trustees, it took a motion to committee to get this kind of action. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Laskin. I'm going to pass the chair to trustee Hassan. Thank you.
Thank you.
As the Chair of FPEC, I was provided the courtesy from the staff on multiple occasions to give input on the survey. On multiple occasions, I indicated that I thought that choosing priorities over highlighting what to cut was the more beneficial way to go. And that wasn't adhered to. But my point is, is that even when it was acknowledged that they weren't going to go in that direction, I had an opportunity to highlight that if we were going to go from it from a cuts perspective, then there's a chance that special education didn't need to be included into the list. And I didn't realize that in real time. I didn't make that advocacy at the time. I apologize to the public. I apologize to the committee for the lack of advocacy in that regard. And I appreciate the Director's willingness to honor the will of the committee tonight when it votes. Trustee Lee, oh, sorry, I'll take the floor back. And with that, trustee Lee.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Whoops, sorry, my camera didn't work. Here we go. I want to thank staff in their determination for continuing with the survey. I think it's the right survey to do. I've gotten the same feedback from my community. They said, why are we cutting? Why do we need to make these decisions? Parents told me that we are asking them to choose to cut either an arm or a leg, or both arms or both legs. These are acceptable. But team, that is the choice that is put before us. I'm not here to defend government funding. Our staff have told us that $1,500 in funding cuts per student, when adjusted for inflation, has been done since 2019. That's $345 million a year in annual funding. The fact that we have a $60 million apartment gap right now means we have already cut $290 million. After cutting $290 million a year from this board, there is nothing left. Every decision will affect students. This survey makes it very clear to our parent community what we have to do if those cuts go through. And this survey makes it personal for everyone involved. And what that does is it helps this board in encouraging our community to advocate on behalf of students. Every parent who did the survey now understand the severity of the situation and the criticalness of their advocacy towards the province and the Ministry of Education to make sure that we get the funding we need. We didn't do a survey and concern, and drive concern to 14,000 parents. We now have 14,000 strong advocates who are going to fight along our side to get our students the resources that they need. I don't want to make the cuts, but here's the reality. We're not here as trustees to say easy things to the community. We're not here to have good conversations. We're not here to make promises that nobody can keep. We have been entrusted by the community to make decisions on the allocation of scarce resources. And just because that, the total quantity of those resources aren't there, it doesn't mean we don't have to make those choices. They're real, and our community needs to know them transparently, bluntly. If we, as trustees, have trouble explaining the survey, then we should be asking staff to explain it on our behalf. But to avoid the conversation, to protect our communities from the discussion, and to hide the magnitude and the severity of the decimation that these choices will have towards our board from the very stakeholders whose children's future depends upon it, I think that is a disservice. We need to keep the survey intact. It's helping rally support for the board. It's not hurting us. We have to face it, and we have to have those conversations. Be brave. That's it. I am against this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Lee. Trustee Shan, I'm going to ask you to be brief, if you could. Try to be concise. We would like to try to get this.
Try, I'll try my best. I think, you know, I get it that we need to be transparent and we need to be realistic when we communicate. But any kind of consultation has a layer of ethical consideration, has a layer of responsiveness. You know, when we do focus groups, we do make sure that they are responsive. So I get the intention, but we heard from people that it hurt them. It is harming them. It is impacting them. And I, as somebody who does not have a family member with, who is a child with special needs, cannot judge that harm, cannot understand that harm. I take those who are harmed, when they say it, I believe it. And it's, as a school board, as someone trying to do this work for the community, it is okay for us to be a little bit more responsive in trying to. We got the data, trying to be adaptive. And I think that is, that's the type of leadership I think community will appreciate as well. So I do get the fact that when it's being raised, when the intention is not to harm, but, you know, obviously, when we say a lot of people filled it, the anxiety that many have gone through to kind of say what they needed to say, is it worth it for us to put people through if they're feeling it? And I believe them when they say they're feeling hurt, because that's their daily experience that we cannot relate to. And it gets exasperated through these mechanisms when system is not being trusted. And so I do think that when equity is serving communities, in this case, families with children with special needs, might be a different community at a different point when we administer something, we respond, we respond with compassion. And I think it's okay for us to do this at this time. The other thing I also want to say that, I don't know if it was intended, maybe staff might respond to this, is that I also heard it also went to staff. And I do think when an organization, as an employer, sends this to the employees to ask them where you would like to see cuts, it is a very different dynamic for each employee who's deciding what they need to do in that survey. You know, it's not a kind of a distant survey. It's very personal, and it's very harmful as a human rights and human resource, or people and culture practice as well. So I just want to flag that I didn't realize it was going to staff, because employees are not to be, I wouldn't see that as a practice that we would send to our, a company would send to their own folks and say, which department, which person around you would you like to see have gone, or which place? So I do think that that was also another layer that needs a little bit more consideration. But having said this, it is a learning, it's not pointing fingers. It's a learning opportunity for all of us. Many of us could have been more actively involved. Many of us could have been taken different roles. And I take responsibility as well. But let's do what seems to be the right thing to do at this time, is to reduce the harm and take responsibility for it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Shannon. With that, we'll open the vote. McLean in favor.
Trustee Rajwani in favor.
Lee against.
Shan in favor.
Erhard in favor.
The committee is in favor.
I think so. Who didn't you get?
Phil? Wong's here. And Bodhi in favor.
Thank you, trustee Wong. We good?
I'd like to move a motion to defer, or do they just get deferred anyway?
Sorry?
6.2, 6.1, and 6.2 to defer to the next FPEC meeting?
Yeah. Do we need to? And that passes.
The Chair.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
May I motion to defer item 6.1, 6.2 to the next FPEC?
We will do that.
Move, I'll need someone to second.
Done, second, all in favor? Opposed, if any? Okay, we're good. A motion for adjournment. Trustee Hassan.
Thank you.
Trustee Patel, any opposed? Done, that passes. Thank you all. Have a pleasant morning. And.
Thank you, FPEC Chair.
Have a great day.
Good night, all.